Opening Board of Selectmen's meeting, the regular meeting for Monday, August 4th, 2025, time is 6:01 PM. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have warrants. WR 2603 payables, PR 2602 payroll, and WTH 26 withholding O2. Do you have a motion?
Everybody had a chance to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dennis is abstaining from the payroll one because he has a wiring inspector, Damon, in there. Yep. So I'll make the motion. We'll approve WR 2603 payables, PR 26-02 payroll, WTH withholding 26-02.
Okay, second. On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm going to abstain on the payroll one. It's a PR 26-02.
Abstain. There are no minutes tonight. To public session. Anybody here for public session?
Sean Seeley, Happy Road. Just come to my attention that last meeting, a qualified candidate tried to get on the Conservation Commission, and they weren't appointed. So I just wanted to know if you guys could explain that decision to the citizens of OCAM, because there's no discussion on that matter.
I'm not going to explain it.
That's interesting.
Yeah. There've been a lot of interesting things going on in town.
The Conservation Commission has an open seat. They really need another member. And we've been going to their meetings, trying to support them. And I don't understand this decision. Nobody really does, so.
Okay.
Oh. Unbelievable.
Recall, if you recall, I made the motion for the appointment.
I recall that. I'm mostly talking to the other two. So.
You want to address anything, Mike?
Be pleased. No, I'm going to just let it go.
Interesting.
Well, I mean, I would like to second the request. Oh, Lisa Kill at Happy Road, sorry. I would like to second the request for clarification of that. I mean, I, it's something that people are struggling to understand. It seems to me that there's other agendas that play here. And my concern is primarily that that's going to interfere with our ability to, to stop this battery park. So, you know, and I think the battery park is everybody's primary concern. So I don't understand what else is going on here. But I guess I, I guess I want to ask another question is, does the Board of Selectmen oppose the battery park?
We've stated several times we opposed to it personally and as a board.
So that, that makes the decision making less sense to me. So I second the request for clarification of that because it seems, seems more like a personal agenda to me than a professional decision.
So state your, state what you think your personal agenda is.
I don't have a personal agenda. I just.
Sounds like you do.
Battery park. I'm saying that I feel like the decision made by the board wasn't really a professional decision.
Well, Mayor Nick Kill, Happy Road. I just want to state for the record, you know, obviously your decision is your decision, but I'm a professional person. I've got a bachelor's degree, a master's degree. I run my own business. I have been doing so for the last 15 years. I've worked in the same field for the last 40 years. I've been taking the courses on being able to recognize wetlands and doing the work that the CONCOM does. I've been paying for those out of my own pocket. I feel like I'm a reasonable candidate. Do I know as much as some of the other guys on the committee? Probably not, but I am trying to learn that. So just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Go on.
Thank you, Chair. Barbara Pucci, East Hill Road East. And in many, many meetings, we'll hear the lament, nobody ever volunteers. Everybody's welcome. Nobody ever volunteers. Chair, I'd like to ask a question to each of the selectmen. It's my understanding that the motion was put forward to have a vote after the candidate had already been to the Board of Selectmen once, after the candidate had been to the Conservation Commission and had been supported by them. And that there was, that that motion wasn't moved forward for a vote. I would like to ask each selectman why they chose not to forward. Thank you.
Like I, like I just said, I made the motion.
Yes.
And it didn't get a second.
It didn't get a second. And thank you. That's why, that's what I'm asking is, Selectmen Brunel, Selectmen Bergen, why did each of you not second that when there is an opening and you've got a qualified volunteer standing in front of you?
Question's already been asked.
Please answer it. Please give us an answer.
And Mike Gonnell.
Selectmen Brunel. You know, thank you.
Well, I, Lisa Kill at from Happy Road again, I'll just say that that just contributes to the, the sentiment that there's something here that, you know, if you can't come right out and say what it was, then that's even more concerning than what actually happened.
Want to say one more thing? Sean Seeley, Happy Road. I don't know what you guys think is going on here, but we're trying to work together on this. We're trying, we're trying to have a unified effort to stop this battery energy storage park. I've been working every day after work, every weekend on this, researching, trying to find a way to stop this. And in order to get things done, we need to work very closely with the Conservation Commission. So if you guys aren't allowing that to happen, then you are standing in the way of us stopping this thing. Because I'm telling you that that's all we need is we need to work with the Conservation Commission.
Could you explain "we"?
The citizens of OCAM, the citizens of OCAM. We, we're trying to help. The people of OCAM are coming together and trying to help. And the planning board has worked with us, the Conservation Commission has worked with us. The only ones who haven't worked with us is the Board of Selectmen. And I honestly feel that you're not only are you not working with us, you're, you're, you're standing in our way.
How so?
How so? Because you're not, you're not letting an open seat on the Conservation Commission get filled?
But once again, explain, explain "we".
"We" is the citizens of OCAM.
You speak for all the citizens of OCAM?
I'm speaking for the citizens of OCAM who came together to try to find a solution. We're trying to.
Who are they?
We're trying to support the.
Who are they?
Or who's who?
There are various groups.
Yeah, there's various people, various groups. Yeah. It's just people are, we're trying to take action. And we're trying to support the Conservation Commission. The last Conservation Commission meeting went very well. And we were all on the same page on what actions needed to be taken. And since then, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if there's a Conservation Committee tomorrow. I didn't see it on the agenda. But we need to work very closely with the Conservation Commission and we need.
How come the Conservation Commission wasn't here for that meeting, other than Lucy?
For, for your private meeting or?
No, no.
That meeting?
That meeting.
They unanimously, they unanimously, unanimously voted to appoint Nick. How come they want?
There's no, there was no correspondence with the board that there was a vote that I'm aware of.
It's recorded. They voted at their meeting in front of all of us.
Right, I'll say it again. There was no correspondence to the board stating a record of your vote.
I don't think that matters.
Well, Lisa.
I'm sorry, it does matter.
I, I believe that, that Lucy alluded to the fact at the last meeting that, that the candidate was supported by the Conservation Commission. I remember her saying that, and I believe she represented that at the meeting. When we can go back and watch the recording, but I believe that was stated. And, and you know, just the fact that it's so important to know who's "we" and who are the citizens. Everybody in town is working against the battery park to stop it. I mean, it makes me feel like there's some sort of a agenda here that it matters who you are and who you associate with, whether or not you are allowed to get involved in town government here. It's like a power and control thing. That's the way it appears to me. And you know, we're giving you an opportunity to refute that, but you're taking the opportunity to not say anything.
Yeah, I might take that one. You want to talk about agendas? Since I ran, I've been accused of corruption, ethics violations, trying to line my pockets. All through the election, I had to listen to that garbage. Since I've been on the board, I've listened to more garbage, including three letters to the editor in the last three weeks to the Barry Gazette that are plain, flat-out lies about the town meeting and Article 19. Everything we do, we get attacked. Rick Hendra wrote a letter and stated there was no discussion allowed. Aaron wrote a letter. And what was his comment? Oh, I second, I move the question moments after the motion was made. And you wrote a letter last week. And what was your comment about it? No vote was allowed. You said it twice. It's on video. And let me give you the breakdown of what went on on the video, just in case anybody here wasn't at the meeting and anybody that wants to watch this wasn't at the meeting. I urge him to go to the YouTube channel of the town and watch the meeting on video, the town meeting. At 27 minutes and 38 seconds, I opened discussion on Article 19. 29:05, I was asked as the moderator to allow Town Council to talk. His comments were, it goes beyond state regulations. It causes more work. There's no enforcement mechanism. And more than likely, the Attorney General will not approve the bylaw. That was left out of all three letters to the editor. At 31:02, he finished. I got back to the microphone as the moderator, and I asked, is there any other discussion? Not one person raised their hand to be recognized. At 31:05, a motion to move the question was made and seconded by about three people from the floor, not by me. Do you understand what that means when somebody moves the question? What?
You, well, my recollection, well, my recollection of what happened was that.
It doesn't, it's on video. I just broke it down.
Right, right.
I don't care what your recollection was.
Well.
I just asked you a question. Do you, do you understand what it means when somebody moves the question?
I, I think so.
What?
It may, well, what it seemed to mean to me at the meeting was that what we were voting on was to not vote on it, but to dismiss it.
That was the motion that was made to pass over it.
Right.
Do you understand?
But there was no vote taken and that was my point in my article.
No, there was a vote taken on the motion. Do you understand what it means when somebody moves the question? I've asked you three times now.
Well, why don't you tell me? Can I interrupt for one second?
If you want to answer the question, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I'm going to answer the question this way. You guys.
Just one answer.
You guys are refusing to answer our questions, but you are heatedly attacking us.
I've been attacked since I started for the last four months.
How, how many times have I attacked you, Dennis? I've always been very civil to you. And I would like you to be civil to us because that's what we're trying to be here. We may disagree with you, but what we're trying to say here is that the town needs everybody to work together to defend the battery park.
And if you think you guys are working with us, we get attacked about everything.
Okay. When was the last time we attacked you?
Your wife attacked me in last paper.
She, she wrote what she thought she saw.
Okay, I'll answer the question I've asked. When somebody moves the question, it ends debate right now and it goes to a vote.
Right.
I asked for a vote on the motion.
Okay.
It was a voice vote.
And who moved the question?
John Diamond moved the question.
And was John Diamond talking to anybody about that beforehand, about whether he should move that question?
He wasn't talking to me.
Were you talking to anybody about that, John?
I'm going to answer that question. I get sick of listening to the person that's been on the computer all year long about his campaign of slamming and trying to ruin this town and separate the people into two borders. He gets up and I listen to Town Council, and I wasn't about to let this continue any further because it was going to cost the town money and time and people. It was pretty obvious, but somebody had a different agenda that they were going to go after the town. So I voted to end the discussion quickly and end this.
Right, because transparency doesn't matter.
Transparency matters. Well, you better look at the person who's talking about transparency and who he's working for.
That seems to be the, that seems to be the confusion for, for you folks is you do not understand whether you didn't learn it in middle school, in high school, in civics, Robert's rules for a town meeting. The motion was to pass over the article. There was a discussion. Town Council, at the board's request, offered an opinion as to why it wasn't a good idea. And I will point out that your article didn't point out, or Mr. Hendra's article, it was voted down by over two to one to pass over.
I'll finish.
So that's the townspeople making a decision that they didn't agree with.
I also received a letter from a member of the planning board asking them to do, take that position, which, you know, you could say that's overly trying to influence people's decision.
Excuse me, Tom Sape, Barry Road. It was a bylaw that no one read, no one knew a damn thing about until it was introduced. I doubt very highly. I think most people in OCAM are intelligent enough to realize that a bylaw needs to be discussed and read well before we vote on it. The fact that someone read it and said, this is not a good idea, someone who happened to be on the planning board, Bill Warbas, and said in his opinion that it wasn't a good idea. Town Council said it wasn't a good idea. I doubt very highly they're in collusion. The only collusion I seem to see in this town is a cult of personality that is against anything that anyone else says.
I disagree.
I know you do.
I disagree strongly because what I see happening in this town is that there are a group of people who are used to running the town and having their voices heard. And when new people try to get involved and might have a different opinion, they're shut out. Not only maybe because they strongly voiced that opinion and are good at doing so about spreading their opinion, but, but the people who associate with them and are like-minded to them, and the new people who try to get involved are shut out merely. And this goes back to my point. We were talking about Conservation Commission and why the appointment was, was denied, that nobody seconded the motion. And we digressed into this conversation, but it, it is related to the point I made that I feel that it is very difficult for this town to be democratic and to let new people in. And, and that when you're not allowed to participate in things, it's because of who you associate with and what agenda you have. And the town in a democratic society needs to be open to people getting involved and having different opinions. And if people don't share the opinion of the people who are currently running the board, when did it become something American to shut those people out and to shut them up?
You're not being shut out.
No, but we'll be shut up.
I can't have an opinion, you can.
You don't have to look at me and go, that's very immature.
Honest to God, look at you.
That.
Chairman, point of order. Shut us down.
Okay. It's.
Okay, okay. Hold on. You have a question over here.
May I ask one more question?
We have a question behind you.
I just want to point out, you know, you say that these guys are not being fair and everything else. They appointed Barbara Pucci's husband to the Finance Committee after he, he knew, they knew that he voted fair, might as well just say his name. They also appointed Rick Hendra who wrote again. I'm, no, I'm just saying that, that.
How do you know who my husband?
He happens to add your name.
Well, Mr. Chairman, point of order. There's two people speaking.
My, my guess, my guess.
That's been happening all evening.
So we're going to stop it now, though.
So please clarify that.
I don't, I don't know how he voted. But my guess is that he, more than likely, had a chance that he would have voted fair, since you guys are friends with him. Just guessing.
Okay.
May I have a moment, please?
Oh, Jesus. Here we go.
Barbara Pucci, thank you, Chair. Barbara Pucci, East Hill Road East. And I'm here representing myself. I'd like to get back to the Conservation Commission, please. Selectman Brunel, you made the point of where was the Conservation Commission that night? Now, the previous meeting on July 21st, it was on the agenda. Nick came to this meeting. Lucy Test now was there. Lucy said that the whole Conservation Commission supported him and supported him on that commission. That was on July 21st. If you had questions about his background or ability to do the job, you had ample time in that meeting to ask.
I didn't get the, we didn't, Dennis and I didn't get the opportunity to ask those questions.
He was here. He came up and stood right.
Don made the motion to appoint him. That was the very first.
Talking about the, there was a meeting where there was no motion to, there was no, no vote or anything.
And Don said we would do it at a next meeting.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, you asked about why and that you had no notification from the Conservation Commission on July 21st. Lucy, Lucy was here and she told you if you.
Did you understand what I said?
No. She was not listening.
Wow.
I said, we didn't have a written notification of a, of a roll call vote.
Point, you could have.
It was not.
On July 21st.
It was not. And where was the Conservation Commission at the meeting, other than Lucy?
So.
Do you know where they were?
The reason why you did not move the motion forward? Because the.
I'm not giving you a reason why I didn't. It's over with.
Thank you.
That's all there is to say. Sean Seeley, Happy Road. So if I wanted to join the OCAM Conservation Commission, I have a, I have an environmental background. I love the town of OCAM. All I want to do is protect land in OCAM, okay? Would I not be able to be appointed because I don't align politically with the board? I don't align politically with the Board of Selectmen? Is that what, what the case is? Because I don't think that's fair. Would I be able to get appointed to Conservation Commission if I put my name in or not?
If you took out nomination papers and ran for election, you'd be golden.
Conservation Commission is down a man right now, and they really need help and you guys aren't helping them. And that's one of the reasons they weren't at that meeting, because they're busy. They have a lot of things to do. And then you.
I would think that was a pretty important thing that they should have showed up for.
Working on the battery energy storage system, and that is a lot of work. And they're, they're doing a great job. They really are. And we're, we're supporting them in any way we can.
And the, the reason this devolved into the town meeting is because you brought up having agendas.
Right.
And that was having an agenda. That article was having an agenda.
Right, but I wanted to bring it back to the.
That's fine. But I also never, I also never got to finish what I was saying about that. We had a voice vote. Aaron asked for a hand vote, which I immediately agreed to. Asked for a hand vote. It was defeated. The motion to pass over was approved. The vote was 63 to 27, if I recall.
But that's what it was.
That's.
It was a motion to pass over. It wasn't a vote on.
You may not like the motion. If, if you guys.
But am I correct?
If you get, yeah, it was. If you guys could have.
We didn't vote on.
If you had enough people.
We should have just.
Stop talking and let me finish.
So it's, you know. I, so I just need to let you lecture me angrily and I can't.
When I'm done, you can answer me if you want. You may not like the vote and how it went. If you had enough votes to shut down passing it over, you could have remade a motion to approve it, and we would have voted on that at that time.
But you didn't.
But you didn't have enough votes.
Well, you know.
Which means you wouldn't have gotten it approved anyways.
But we did not vote on.
We voted on the motion.
Voted to pass over a vote on the article, correct?
What's that?
We did not vote on the article. What we voted on was to pass.
It doesn't matter.
It does matter.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. It matters.
The way the town, it may matter to you, but the way the town meeting runs.
The vote was very aggressively shut down.
No, it wasn't.
With a demonstrative motion that we weren't even going to let it go to vote. And to me, that showed how passionate some people were about stop, stopping this.
So you think other people's rights should be superseded by your feelings? The way things went.
I think we should be inclusive and transparent. I don't think other people.
And so.
Be superseded by.
So the townspeople were inclusive and transparent. And they passed over it and they voted to pass over the article. So you seem to have a problem with 63 people disagreeing with you at the town meeting.
What I have a problem with is that it was shut down before it got to vote. And I don't understand.
All I can say is you have no idea how a town meeting works.
Aggressive about it.
You should study up on town meetings. Go back several hundred years in this country. Learn the procedures.
We got a question.
Thank you. Lucy Delia, 325, East Hill Road East. Can I go back to the Conservation Commission issue? Do you have certain criteria that you're looking for, for an individual that should be nominated to that commission? And if you do, it would be helpful for all of us to know what criteria you're looking for in an individual. Because apparently we had somebody that was, it's embarrassing to go that far and not move forward in a public forum, you know, and not know why. So I think for the next person that is entertaining the idea, it would be helpful for that person to know what criteria to look for. That's the suggestion. Thank you.
Yes. Claire Hendrick from Lincoln Road. I just wanted to ask, could you give clarification what the proper procedure is to get on the Conservation Commission? Is it appointed or elected?
Elected.
It's elected? And if you have a vacancy?
No, they're appointed.
Conservation's.
Appointed by the board. Appointed. That's why you had to vote.
It's appointed. Okay, so what is the proper procedure? Is it that the person goes to the Conservation Commission and the chair formally through request sends it to the select board for consideration? Is, is that the proper procedure?
Usually Conservation will interview the candidate and then make a recommendation to the board, which is what happened.
And does it make it, does it have to be in writing or is it verbal?
Well, it was verbal.
It wasn't to me verbal. It wasn't to Dennis verbal. There was nothing written.
Nothing written.
From that standpoint.
He sent in his application form. I gave it to you. No, then he sent in his application form. I gave it to you.
So just.
But that's not, that's not a recorded vote. An application.
If the Conservation Commission sends you the request, is the request you sent to this Select Board?
I sent an application to them, knowing that he is coming forward meet with them.
And then then.
But he had already met with the Concom members and spoke with them. And then he came here to be appointed or not.
Just so if there was another reapplication, they know what to do properly. That's all.
The question is, is everybody appointed consistently or is it different for each board? And how did the, how would the unanimous endorsement get recorded? How how would it get recorded?
It'd be in the minutes of their meeting.
Correct. Okay. On their agenda.
So does that mean then the request that come, I'm sorry, but the request Lucy has to been then be put on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's why we didn't vote on it.
Okay, it was on the agenda.
Had to put it on to another meeting.
Okay, yeah.
He was here.
Sarah Peterson, three oh seven Spencer Road. So if Nick's appointment to Concom was unanimously supported by Concom? And you received written notice of that, would you support him?
I'm not gonna say.
Highly qualified. It seems like there is a personal vendetta against one person in this town and that's highly discouraging.
I don't even know Nick.
So if you saw the qualifications and you saw unanimous approval by Conservation Commission? Why would you stand in the way of that? It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
And the way that you have spoken to people directly tonight is appalling to me.
I don't, okay.
It's appalling and how that sits here in this town government.
But you don't think it's appalling because things have been written about me personally?
That's neither here nor there. That's a personal, that's a personal thing. That is a personal thing.
Okay.
That should not affect the town politics and what we.
I'm not saying it, God, you said the way I'm talking to people tonight appalls you. I said the things that.
You spoke to Lisa Killig, appalled me.
The things that have been written about me by Lisa are appalling.
Personally.
Of course, so that's okay. That's okay. That's okay.
I'm not saying if it's okay or if it's not okay.
You seem to be saying it's okay.
I am not. I'm saying the way that you directly spoke to a citizen of this town is appalling.
Okay.
And never should be allowed on this board and should have been stopped.
That's your opinion.
I was gonna say, in my opinion, you do, in my opinion.
Been recognized, Chad. Would you just wait until the Chair recognizes you instead of interrupting?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Susan Turnbull, ten eighty-nine New Braintree Road. Could we proceed with your agenda, Chair?
Okay, so. And Lisa Killig, Cap Good Road. Um, I just want to say that I do believe that I was being factual and not disrespectful. And what I wrote, I know you don't agree.
It wasn't factual, Lisa.
All right, well, you can, you can.
You said no vote was taken.
You can disagree. There was no vote taken.
Yes, there was.
We raised our.
It's different. It's different.
And my point, and my point in that, and my point in that section of the article was that how?
How it played out showed how vehemently the town wanted to block it. That was my.
What's going on right now is you didn't get your way at the town meeting.
No.
And that's what this is all about. And sixty-three people voted to not go with your bylaw. That's the result of the town meeting.
Point.
And if you knew something about that vote and where it goes in the future, you wouldn't be so worried about it.
Well, I allow myself to get sidetracked, but my point of raising my hand again was just to say that I felt that my words were not disrespectful. I was reporting on the facts as I see them and it wasn't an attack.
Facts are not as you see them.
Attack. It was an attack, a professional attack, a attack on the Board of Selectmen and how they're doing the job, not a personal attack on you.
I I will offer an observation at the town meeting on the twenty-fourth. In the group that you were sitting in. There was a lot of talking during the meeting. And a lot of people couldn't hear what was going on. And that's probably why you missed out on a lot of stuff is because everybody was talking to each other in. The section that you folks were in.
I think it had a lot to do with the audio in there too. It was very difficult to hear and I actually did wind it moving.
But there was a lot of talking.
That I could hear.
I'll agree with you. It was terrible to hear in there and it was because of the air blowers that were.
It was very difficult to hear and we were in the back. I moved up, but by then I I I had missed a few.
Which is my point that there shouldn't have been as much chit chat about nothing. Everybody's sitting there.
You associated with the wrong person in town and you're guilty.
And a lot of people.
Got no chance in hell of doing it.
Couldn't hear what was going on because of the just the chit chats.
At the very beginning of the meeting, I went back and talked to Aaron. I actually went back to talk to a non-registered voter. You probably heard the whole conversation. I think you were right there.
I don't think I heard it, but I saw it.
Okay, Aaron asked me if I had. The text of his bylaw. And at first I said, no. And then I thought about it. I said, hang on. I said, let me go back up to the podium and look through my stuff. I did. I found it. I went back at Aaron. And the only reason I'm mentioning Aaron is because it was his submission. So I showed it to him. I said, two pages. I said, do you want me to read the whole thing? He said, yes. Okay. I was very respectful to him. I've been very respectful.
I think that's very tricky.
It should be.
Yeah.
But it's not being, it's not being reciprocated. I'm being crucified no matter what I do, what I say. It doesn't matter. And a lot of it is not true.
So is this a vendetta against one?
No, this has nothing to do with that.
Against one specific person? Is that where the board stands today? Is anybody who is affiliated with Aaron, you are automatically against?
Barbara, I'm gonna call you off for a second and this isn't personal. As my wife said, Barbara has said hi to me once. The whole time I've known her. I haven't known you before this election. I I almost walked into you last week, two weeks ago coming in here. I looked at you and said hi and you ignored me. I know you don't like me and that's okay. I appointed her husband to the Finance Committee.
Good to know.
So no.
Because it seems to me as an observer in this room that it is a personal attack against anyone who is associated or affiliated with Aaron Langloch.
This is just feeling ridiculous.
Please.
Good lord. Thank you for being recognized. Barbara Piochi, East Hill Road East. I am insulted and resent you calling me out, trying to shame me because I didn't say too low to you. I don't even remember what you're talking about. I also, quiet. I'm speaking. I also.
That wasn't disrespectful.
Yes, it was. The interrupting me was the disrespectful. I do not like bringing up my husband here and over here.
Not, okay, okay.
That's enough.
She asked if it was a personal vendetta and I said, no.
Me up. I'm just letting you know. Please don't do that. I resent it and it's insulting. I didn't see you last week or two weeks ago, whatever you're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on.
Yep. All right. Well, we still have a problem. We we need to put somebody on this commission. So what does the board want to do? Re-advertise for it?
Yeah, it's not on the agenda tonight anyway, so.
Yeah.
We can just, we can just tell her about the dad back out. Replications.
Yep.
Uh, Vic, you can reapply. We'll go from there. We'll go from there.
Yep.
Okay. Any other public session?
Okay. Lucy Delia, three two five, East Hill Road East. Ash trees. Um, I'm noticing while I'm driving in different towns that National Grid is out there. I think it's National Grid, but they're cutting a lot of branches that are from ash trees. We all know that they're dying and these branches that they're cutting are going over power lines. Um, I walk a lot in our neighborhood and I noticed that we do have some ash trees that are dying and they're on our power lines. So I guess is there a plan to work with National Grid? I guess tree warden? Is there a plan to work with National Grid on a?
They actually just, they actually just wrapped up their five-year cutting plan for pruning.
Sure, but. It's weird.
Dying all over town.
They're dying everywhere. I understand.
Dying faster than they could.
Can we, can we get some proactive movement now while they're not, there's no snow or ice on these, bringing them down and stopping? Hitting our power lines and stopping our electricity?
All that's what I've been doing is tree warden, but if you guys want to put a half a million dollars into the account, we can make a big dent.
Give a half million dollars, daddy.
Well, no, no.
Retirement, but.
No, no, I don't mean you personally. I mean the town.
You know, we don't.
Budget.
Half a million dollars.
Exactly.
Are there any grants? Is National Grid doing anything? Because.
They are doing.
If it, if it comes down and it knocks out the power, they're gonna have to come out anyway and cut it. Do they look for money for that? Or is it a reaction?
No, National Grid has their cutting plans and they've, since I've been tree warden, they've probably spent over a million and a half dollars in Oakham. Removing hazard trees, pruning, but we live in a forested town.
Right.
And.
So I guess the answer would be that it's already been done. So when.
No, it's, no, the answer is it's.
That's so sad.
It's an ongoing process and they have a budget.
Hmm.
National Grid just split um, the forestry district in two, from northern and southern, so.
Where are we?
We're in the southern part now.
Are we gonna get any help?
We've been getting help right along.
I think what you're asking is can we notify the grid to take a look at these trees?
I asked if there was a plan. Yes, you can put it that way. Maybe my question didn't come across the way I, you saw it. But can we contact National Grid and see if they can do something about these ash trees?
I contact them all the time when there's trees that are hazardous that, you know, were spotted or the highway or the police call in to me. I go immediately to National Grid Forestry and talk to Brandy Tarantino. She's in charge of our area. They have thirty-eight towns in central Mass. They divided that by two and added another person because of everything you're talking about. And they have a budget and they have to spread it out. If you go to some of the other towns and you actually start looking, you're gonna see that it's a lot worse than Oakham.
Well, I'm not gonna go looking at all these ash trees.
No, I'm just, when you're driving around.
What's in our median area?
Yeah, I'm just saying when you're driving around, they've made tremendous progress in Oakham.
But they need to.
Compared to where it was.
Come back.
Yeah, and I've taken out a lot in just the last six months. I've probably taken out thirty trees.
Well, can you take a ride down East Hill Road East?
I have.
I'll be happy to spray paint them with red paint.
On the dirt road?
Not on, no, on the tree trunk itself. It's a dead tree.
Oh, no, I meant on the dirt road section.
Oh, East Hill Road East? Well, if you go down East Hill Road and you take a left at the red barn.
Yeah, take a left at Tom's house. Yeah, yeah, I know. I've seen the ones you're.
Pass Tom. No, you take a left.
Yeah, I know. Go past Tom's to the town line.
Yeah, we've got some trees that are pretty awful over there.
Oh, I've seen them. It's just a question of, we cut the tree warden's budget this year to balance the budget.
It costs money.
I didn't hear anybody get up at the town meeting and go, hey, let's throw fifty grand in the tree warden's budget.
Whose job is it to look at the trees that are in the town that are hazardous?
It's mine as a tree warden.
So why didn't you ask for more money, saying that this is a problem happening?
Because I know what the budget is.
Job cleaning out all those trees.
Because I know what the budget is and I know that you're not, we don't have the money. So you have to triage them and take the worst ones.
If you're talking about the town budget, we cut ninety thousand dollars to stay under the two and a half cap.
No, I'm aware of how it, uh, felt how it just made it, but just give me a team.
We can't get it anymore.
Understand that. My, my innocent question is, can we do something about these ash trees? And you're telling me essentially, no, once.
No, I'm not.
Happens.
I'm not telling you, no, I'm telling you it's, it's in constant motion. It, it happens through the year and last year and the year before. And when the money runs out, I usually cut through the fall. And then I stop cutting mid-winter in case there's an emergency, snowstorm where we have to bring a crew in to pay emergency fees, middle of the night. On trees that are affecting the roads. No, that would be National Grid. If they take out power lines, they would come do that. But there's roads that could be blocked where there are no power lines, there are no phone lines. And you have to open the road. You've got to have a tree crew come in. And then once the snow season's done, I spend the rest of the budget removing more dead trees.
I have one last comment then, what I'm gathering from this. We don't have the money to do it proactively.
We have the money that's budgeted.
Well, we have money that's budgeted, but it's not sufficient to go through now proactively and cut down ash trees that are cascading over power lines. And they're dead trees. And you get a blizzard and bam, it takes out the power line. So when it takes out the power line, then it's not Oakham's problem. It's National Grid's problem. So then they would come and they would cut it and it wouldn't cost.
Or if it's already on the ground, they'd come up and put their wires back up.
Yes.
Or we can send an email to National Grid Forestry and ask them to take a look at this.
Okay, so does that? Does it tell them?
Come from us. It would come from us.
It would come from you?
Yeah.
Do you want it drafted?
No, it doesn't.
You have to draft it for you.
I've had the conversation with National Grid about all the roads in Oakham.
I don't know what to do.
What we have is a complaint from a citizen that we need to address.
Yes, yeah, that's.
And that's all I'm saying is we can send an email to National Grid, make them aware of it, or the damn thing falls down and pulls the power lines.
Yeah.
What is so hard about this?
For me, nothing. I'm not getting that kind of answer from my tree ward.
Well, no, you're not listening to the answer.
Oh, I listened to the answer.
And what did you hear me say?
That we don't.
Did you hear me say that?
When it happens, we react.
No, that's not what I said. I said, I've cut down trees all over town.
Yes.
And I triage them to cut the worst of the worst because of the budget constraints. You take the worst, the the biggest, hey, there's three on New Braintree Road that are right over the wires. National Grid looked at them three years ago. They gotta take them down with a crane. But they have to have their budget. They have to answer to their people. It's corporate America. Would you rather spend the whole budget taking down three trees on the Braintree Road at Lincoln Road? Or would you rather I come up to East Hill East and take care of what you're talking about?
I guess.
It isn't just you, you know? Okay, well, it sounds like you're worried about your one road when I have to worry about every road in town.
Well, I'm not worrying about my road. I am citing that that's where I walk and that's what I see. I don't walk around the whole town and look at dead ash trees. No, they're there. I'm just bringing it up. Is there a proactive program? Essentially, it's, no. Because.
If that's your, if that's your opinion, go with it. If you think that the tree warden's not doing anything, maybe you should vote Aaron Langloch in as tree warden because he got a lot done.
You're being unfair.
No, I'm not. I'm being.
You're being, I I'm not attacking anyone and I certainly didn't bring in another individual into this conversation. I brought this to the green ward. Or else my.
You don't want to listen.
Other than this one. I do listen. I made a career out of listening. I listen clearly. What you have in your mind, maybe you're not conveying it to me clearly. I'm not sure.
I'm, what I'm conveying to you is there's a whole town full of dead trees.
That's what I'm concerned about. Is there.
You're concerned.
Plan to 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 proactively.
Yeah.
Get rid of some of these dead trees that are.
And we're doing it.
For that. And my, my answer that I received, the answer I received was that we don't have the money.
I had a call from Lisa Gilnick.
You can call me later, okay?
Asking me to look at a tree that's on her property and wanting to know if I could do anything about it. And it's eight feet inside her property. Why do I have to respond to that?
You didn't respond to it though.
I did respond.
Which I appreciate.
Wait a minute, this one. But, but I was waiting to get the floor. Can I have the floor? Because I was gonna say that. Mike came, I called Mike. He came right out and looked at it. He said, basically it was on my property. I don't know how many feet. It might have been eight, but it was always my responsibility. But it's big and it's dead and, you know, it reaches out for many, many feet and yards in each direction and it does go over the power lines. Um, I was concerned. I actually moved all of my, because I had a power lines that came from telephone pole to my house, which was quite long because I have a long driveway. I removed all those. I put them underground because I have about four of these ash trees that are about to come down um, um, in the process of having them removed. But I was hoping that National Grid, I consulted with Mike. I was hoping that maybe either the town, which Mike gave me the explanation of that, it's on your property, it's your responsibility. Um, it's still gonna knock. Um, it's still gonna knock out power to a big part of the town if the branches come down, but I get the rule that he's going by. Um, so I sent an email to National Grid, asking them to take care of it and I got absolutely no response. I even, I even found out, I made sure I sent it to forestry, but I, I called several times, I emailed, send it to this person in forestry. Absolutely no response. I know they're very busy, but I just wanted to say that I would really appreciate it if the select board, if the town could reach out to them. Because I really do think that this winter is gonna be really bad for power outages if they don't start paying attention to this. Um, and they're everywhere. They're on my road too.
I mean, I, I will say that since I started as tree warden in twenty twelve, our power outages have diminished greatly.
Considerably, yeah, cause they're doing.
And most of the outages we have that I keep track of are personal property trees coming across the right of way. Which are not trees, which the town cannot cut because they're on private property and National Grid has to get permission if they're over their wires to cut them.
And, and mine are. Yeah, so I would love to give them that.
And that is the majority, the vast majority of the power outages.
Right.
Our private property owners' trees coming across the right of way.
Now, I.
Compared to twenty twelve, when it was a lot of town trees.
But when you try to call attention to it, you know, it, it's, it's hard to get like, I mean, I can, a tree guy, I might have my tree guy do it. But it's really precarious and it's over the wires of the, you know, and I, I just really feel like National Grid should, should be looking at these trees. I, I hate to see this winter be a totally different story and have there be, you know, dozens and dozens of power outages because of these ash trees. Cause they, they really are an issue and it's a good thing to call attention to.
Well, lately it's been the oak trees.
Really?
Coming off private, the two power outages we had this summer were oak trees and like I said, one of them was just a limb, town tree. No wind, no rain, took down three phays on Barry Road. The other one was Adams Road, came off a private property, half the tree just split and fell across the right of way. Can't do anything about it.
Done?
Yep.
Next up is financial policies. You guys had the opportunity to review these.
Yes.
Grant management policy, post-employment benefit liability policy and capital planning policy. Some vested changes, comments?
My only comment on uh capital planning is, I think Clark can back me up on this. I was on the board before. We kinda tried to set this up and it just fell apart. Nobody wanted to get on the committee. Um, and doesn't mean we don't do it.
Oh, I remember that Dennis. And the other thing that happened, I haven't had a chance to read that policy yet.
Which paragraph?
Working my way through, okay? So I didn't get that far. But I remember before we, we tried to do a capital plan and we asked all the departments to come in with a capital plan.
Yep.
And uh, I think it wasn't workable Dennis. I remember that. We got so many requests. I remember, in fact, we brought in a special. We, uh, we hired a, it was a, a project. Um, I can't remember the company. They brought in interns and they put it together for us. And it just, given our budget, it just wasn't workable.
Yeah.
It just was not workable. So it requires somebody that understands the equipment we have and what needs we're gonna have in the future and are very practical. So I'll, I'll read the policy, but.
That was my other thought in reading this is budget wise, something changes, not really sure how.
That was first four pages.
Well, we didn't fill the money enough, we need the policy.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all we're concerned about right now.
Yeah.
Tell me if we wanted to put together a capital plan, that would be an intensive effort, because we'd have to do something very practical.
You don't want me to get started on this, believe me.
No, I won't. No, I learned my lesson. I'm just gonna sit here and shut my mouth.
This isn't the meeting for it. We're at another meeting.
Do you wanna postpone this till?
No, we can vote on the policy. Nobody has any uh.
Yeah, no, that, just some comments more than anything. Um, on the post-employment benefits, um, second page. There's a note in parentheses, about halfway down through the first paragraph.
Municipal Modernization Act?
Yeah. We just voted this in last year at town meeting, so I'm assuming uh.
Does not have to be revoked.
Revoked, yeah. That's that one. Guess that was it for my.
Maybe also.
No, I really didn't see that.
Motion to adopt these three policies.
Um, I'll make a motion uh to adopt financial policies numbered sixteen through eighteen and procedures guide.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Aye. Board, have any new business? I don't have any. The whole business, we have the Skyline Drive Old Schoolhouse Road. Saw the email from council.
Today?
No. In the last week. He's gotta contact the other firm now because firm that supposedly had all the paperwork, gave it back to the other firm, Jack's firm.
And she went into Jack's probate and all that. That's the same.
That's the one.
Which makes no sense, but.
Well, that's what she said.
Yeah.
So she's working on it.
Okay. Tom, you don't have anything?
No.
Okay.
Correspondence, we had gotten a letter. Advising us of the American Disability Act. I'll read all that. Um. Dated July twenty-sixth, from Aaron Langlois, Scott Road, Ocam. Members of the Board of Selectmen, today marks the anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act. The landmark civil rights law enacted in nineteen ninety, guaranteeing the equal access to public life for individuals with disabilities. While many communities across the country use this moment to reflect and recommit to accessibility and inclusion, I write with concern that Ocam continues to fall short of both the spirit and the requirements of this law. Although the town hall features a ramp, the accessible entrance stays locked and lacks an automatic door opener. Making it difficult or impossible using a wheelchair or walker to enter independently. Once inside, the restroom facilities require descending a flight of stairs. Nying residents with mobility impairments accessed with basic need during a public meeting. Likewise, the Ocam Senior Center, an essential facility for many of our older mobility limited residents, has significant accessibility concerns. Its entrance is not fully ADA compliant. The restroom facilities do not meet accessibility standards. These conditions of, at both facilities are not, only fail our residents, they expose the town to potential legal liability on the Title II of the ADA forty-two USC twelve one thirty-two. And implementing regulations of twenty-eight CFR section thirty-five point one five oh, which require public services and facilities to be readily accessible and usable. Additionally, Ocam is invested in Zoom, YouTube and audiovisual infrastructure, yet continues to hold. Continues to hold meetings without remote or recorded access. This limits participation by residents with disabilities, chronic illness, transportation challenges or caregiving responsibilities. Twenty-eight CFR thirty-five one sixty requires that the communication of people with disabilities be as effective as communication with others. And in twenty twenty-five, that includes remote access. What is particularly troubling is that when residents raised these concerns, they were met with resistance. At our annual town meeting, two selectmen immediately shut down the discussion. Proving accessibility of public engagement, message delivered implicitly and explicitly was, quote, if you want to know what's going on, get to the town hall. That is exclusion, not engagement. This is not acceptable and I cannot imagine that it's legal. Massachusetts also prohibits discrimination in public accommodations under Mass. General Law one fifty-one B, section four, and Mass. General Law two seventy-two uh ninety-eight. This is not just about compliance and serving our residents. Among them, one-third are seniors. It's about opportunity. Grant funding is available right now to help towns like Ocam to make these changes without burdening the taxpayers. The Massachusetts Office on Disabilities, ADA Improvement Grant Program Office funds up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a project to support accessibility upgrades like automatic doors, accessible restroom signage with ramps. Municipalities must have an ADA self-evaluation and transitory plan to apply. Community development block grants administered by the Mass. Department of Housing and Community Development are also available for accessibility improvements for small towns. The USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Program offers loans, grants for ADA compliant upgrades in rural municipalities like Ocam. And additional technical assistance is available through the US Department, Department of Justice and ADA Regional Centers. Ocam has the infrastructure, the funding exists, the legal obligations are clear. What is missing is the commitment to act. I urge you to take immediate steps to, one, commit publicly to a policy of inclusion and access of all residents. Two, initiate remote and recorded access to all public meetings. Three, develop and adopt ADA transitional plan enabling Ocam to qualify for state grants. Four, ensure that the Ocam Senior Center's entrance and restrooms meet ADA accessibility standards. And five, unlock the equipment and accessible, accessible entrance with an automatic door opener. On this anniversary of the ADA, let Ocam become a leader, not a liability, by doing what is right, what is legal and what is long overdue. Let's ensure that every resident can access their government with dignity sincerely, Aaron Langlois.
I'm so pay three thirty-one, Barry Road. Uh, I was on the now, excuse me, Moribund Town Hall Committee that went ahead and put together plans for all of this for the past three years, Tom. This has been at least three years. They've been submitted. They've been put before the town. We put out a major mailing for the town. There has been absolutely no interest in spending the money to redo town hall, which would include the senior center and make it completely ADA accessible. There's just been no interest regarding those brands. We have looked into them. We've looked into them with our representative and our senator. Until we get town commitment to it and the town commitment, not just the select board commitment, that money is unavailable. So this, we're kind of rehashing things that we're all aware of.
Tom, uh, Dawn's got a little bit of news as far as what we applied for, for feasibility study. So we haven't received official notification.
Yet, but we did get noticed that um twenty-five thousand dollars is coming from the state for us to get a feasibility study for the building.
Super. That's great. So it's a start. It's a start.
But we were looking, we did ask for a hundred and in twenty twenty-five.
Right, and I know that a lot of things need to be done here, but we gotta be careful. Cause once we start remodeling one thing, the ADA.
It's gonna be a nightmare.
I think Susan could probably speak to that if she wanted to at the library.
To tell you.
And what we went through to get that building up the code back in the nineties. Tom?
Yeah, Tom Hughesy still wrote, uh, I've been on that committee for, I guess, three years. We did put out a mailer and there was very little interest in the mailer. But the response we got back was that they were more interested in rebuilding this facility opposed to another site that we're looking at, which would be quite a bit more money, probably to ten million dollars. And through Donnie Bertham, we requested some grant money, which I understand it's gonna be available, not the amount. Seventy thousand, but twenty-five or thirty, whatever it's gonna be, will be enough to look into doing something with this building.
Yeah.
There could be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That could be taking this part of the building off and going up with a two-story structure, rougher space.
Yeah.
Could get into, you know, bathrooms that would be on the same level, elevator, access to the top floor.
You guys did a great job putting all this together. We're at the level now, we need a feasibility study with architects and engineers and all of that. And that's what that twenty-five thousand is for.
Right.
So I mean, we're.
And stop moving ahead once.
The, the reason we were on hold was because we were advised by Peter, Senator Peter Durant to do what we did. Apply for that feasibility grant. And like I say, unfortunately, it wasn't, we didn't get what we were hoping for. So that means the balance of whatever that's going to be will come from, have to come from town funds to move this all forward.
Again, the financial situation right now, the town is not very bright, you know, for the next year or two. You know, to come up with enough money just to, this is gonna be a stretch. It would have to be an override of some sort.
You tell me what a good year would be to build anything.
Right.
I've been in this field for forty years and I haven't seen one year yet where it's gonna be able to build anything.
No, I guess you're right.
Bomb it, so. When we got the surveys back, you tallied them.
Right.
And I think we had roughly, was it three to five hundred total that came back?
Yep.
Yeah.
And out of that, it was basically three to one or better than three to one to remodel the town.
Remodel this town, this building, yes. Yeah, yeah. However, the majority of comment was, it's all way too much money.
Yep.
Cause we did an estimate of, I think it was actually eleven to twelve million dollars to redo this building.
And we were around, and we were around eighteen, fifteen to eighteen for a new building.
Right, right.
And we're not sure if we have enough land to do it.
Exactly.
The school was, the school was taken off by the committee because that's our school. And once you give up the school in ten, fifteen years, when all the senior citizens, myself included, have passed away and all young people come in and live in our houses with kids, they're gonna need a school.
Right.
So.
It's really not that the town.
I would take objection of that because demographics is. You know.
Like I said.
We know I disagree on that.
I'm a senior citizen.
Yeah, I know. So am I.
Six hundred kids on my road.
Oh, well, demographics is still down. Sorry, Tom. Demographics is still down. Well, they are spreading them out. That's the problem.
I don't, I don't know if it still holds clear, but I know the school had done a study and for what this is worth of, you know, fifteen, twenty years old. They said it was gonna continue dropping for a while and then they figured it would start ramping back up.
Nope.
They'll, they've changed it or not.
There is another study now that's still down. And the demographics across the United States are down.
I do believe that.
The generation after us just stopped having kids.
Yeah.
So the town really can't be criticized for ADA because we are working on a project that will resolve all of this.
Yeah.
It's not worth.
There may be.
Turning a blind, blind eye to it, you know?
I'm sorry, there, there may be minor things we can do. We may be able to do something with this door, although I think it would be very difficult, particularly the way the door swings.
After the turning radius of six feet, so the whole.
Yeah, we would have to extend the, the ramp and the.
What was the width of the door in the library, Susan? I forget. Downstairs.
That because it was an antique stone building and, and making it to the required width was.
But in the airlock.
Financially, uh, I don't have an airlock. I was able to get away with that too because it's a hundred-year-old building.
And this extension dates to what, Mike?
Extension.
This extension to the town hall.
When was this?
This building right here, mid-fifties. It was built strictly as a classroom.
Right.
I wanna say nineteen fifty-five, fifty-four.
Way that it would qualify for any of that.
There isn't even a foundation on it. It's just a knee wall.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything if it involves plumbing, plumbing. Anything if it involves plumbing. Plumbing is the most difficult, totally.
Yeah.
Just thought of something. The town manager in Brooklyn did the, uh, study, had a company come and do a study for their town hall. They're in a similar position. The cost of building the new one was less than remodeling the old one.
Was it?
You never know what you're going to find in the walls.
Exactly. So that's why we need, we need someone to do the study.
We need a study.
Question I have is, once you get the money for the feasibility study and you get the study completed, is the state going to, uh, set aside any cash for us to make those changes?
We won't know that until we actually tell the state with the feasibility.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd have to.
That's your first step, but that is a possibility, because why?
It's a possibility, but it's not a given.
I know it's not a guarantee. Okay.
Yeah.
There's also a minuscule amount as of today, maybe not tomorrow morning, of federal money, which will probably disappear very quickly.
Forget that.
Because I'm sure we'll put gold attachments on some.
Yeah, I forget that.
Thanks.
So it's a terminal, New Braintree Road. If you are a library under construction at this moment, the state pulled your funding.
Yeah.
Doesn't exist.
So there you are with your, uh, project half, quarter, third, seven, eight, done, and you no longer have any funding.
On a happy note, town hall just got painted. It looks nice.
True, that was to Kevin Leacock. Great job. Did a great job.
Entry is like, wow.
Yeah, it is. It's beautiful.
Close your eyes. You walk up to it. Need sunglasses.
All right, we have, uh, several letters from Highway Superintendent.
Yes.
He's not here tonight, so no, um, might want him.
Yeah, want to read.
I think they're more just advisory.
I can't ask him questions if he's not here. We can put it on for the next meeting.
Yeah, the one about piece of equipment should wait till he can come. Um, one, I think he's already kind of resolved with the driveway washing out on Spencer Road.
Yep.
And the other one was a mowing incident at on Spencer Road that's kind of been an ongoing issue over the years with the resident. Multiple, multiple, probably in the tens of dozens of years. Right, so it came to a head that needs to be resolved on that.
Put on, next meeting then for the equipment discussion.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be the eighteenth.
Yeah, and the other item was, um, the highway vehicle inspections.
Yep.
And, I mean, he can go into it more, but the, uh, state inspection, you know, for their inspection stickers, two oldest trucks just barely passed. Those are the, the large trucks. Um, he got stickers for this year. And he just wants to let us know that next year could be if he's, so he's got to do some planning. We've got to do some planning as to what's going to replace those vehicles when the, can't get an inspection sticker.
Rotted out frames.
Correct. Uh, the oldest one is in better shape than the newer one. And he was looking into to see if there are any temporary repairs and stuff, but I haven't spoken to him this week, so.
How bad was that? I know he was talking about, it was, the rust was building up between pulling, separating them.
They're double frames.
Right.
On the, uh, the green truck. Um, that was the worst than two thousand and four. That was one they bought used out of Vermont.
Yep.
And then the ninety-six is mostly from the leaf springs back on one side. Was, was pretty rough. So, but they did get stickers to operate this winter.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, you know, we can have whatever conversation we're going to have. I know and back when I was on the board, Kevin had one of the trucks uh, had the whole frame sandblasted and repainted.
That's probably the ninety-six.
Is that the one that's good? Better?
Better, yeah.
Yeah, not good, but. Don't know if it's an option or if it's even worth it. I don't know how many miles around that road. What kind of condition the rest of it's in?
Not a lot of miles on the trucks.
No.
They don't travel anywhere really, other than plowing.
Unfortunately. But drive through salt all the time.
Yep.
And those split frames of, gets in between there, you can't.
I'm not going to start the salt conversation. Are any other old business correspondence? Did you guys?
Oh, me?
No, no. And I don't either. Motion to adjourn.
Did you want to, uh, this was just for general intent for us?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.